Father God, we look to you today and we thank you for your blessings and your providence you've shown to us until now. We pray today that you would grant us wisdom, godly wisdom, that we make decisions for our county that would be in best interest and we pray you would just watch over our tongues. We're thankful for those that wear badge and uniform that protect us and keep us safe and we pray you would watch over them and direct them further on. In all our ways may we be praised and made worthy of worship.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do the minutes first and then that? Okay. Minutes were sent via email. Any questions or corrections? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
We had payroll number 18, Ford Calendar Gear 2016, total of $211,344.49. 244 claims totaling $644,359.54.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on. We have bids for two community correction vehicles.
I have a bid for the 2004 Chevy Trailblazer for $150.
How many miles are on that? Do you guys know?
A bid for the 2004 Chevy Trailblazer for $250.
I missed 200 on that one and 100 on that one.
Right. So they increased $50 each. Except the Maric.
Yeah, we keep going so we don't get no more bids. So it has to be at least $50 more than next time. Continue to bid. So one more time and then if they don't bid more, then we can close it? Yes.
Okay. There you go.
Check them out. Thank you.
All right. We will move to Monty.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I have 92 inmates this morning, three are DOC and 15 are F-6 DOC. The other thing I have this morning is I have actually three separate bids, two from Business Velding Temperatures Solutions LLC and one from Felger Heart for the chiller that actually has seen its better days and needs replaced. I, we have had a train in the jail for the past 30 years. The other two, New York and Deiken that were submitted, I tried to find information online and wasn't too successful, so I would suggest if you have any questions about those two products, I have both, both companies are represented here today. You can ask them. I guess what it's going to lead up to is how long you think if you want the jail, if you expect the jail to stand another 30 years, I would say the train had lasted 30 years and I would recommend that. But again, I'm not familiar with the York and the Deiken, to see if those two, how their staying power is and their serviceability, availability of parts and that.
Well, I think probably I'd have each one just explain what their system is, what their components are, lifetime expectancy, that kind of thing, so we'll just.
Tom and PJ, if you want to come up there.
I would say probably pretty comparable to Deiken when you.
Probably.
We've had decent success with them. A lot of the new ones will have, I'm assuming both of them will have scroll compressors, which will probably not be a 30-year unit like the old one was. Nothing's built like those old reciprocating compressors.
Yeah, it's going to be similar to the train as far as the layout, as far as the trains that we looked at, because we did look at the train product too. We felt like New York was the same quality for the money. It's a little less cost for the equipment, but a good quality piece of equipment. We've been doing a lot of New York equipment lately and feel good about the product, so.
And even the train will still have the scroll compressors, which will be the same thing that the York has, it's just smaller.
So the new train's not the same as the old train?
Right.
So the unit itself comes with a warranty and you offered an additional warranty. What would be the maximum? Is it still five years total or is it, what comes with the unit plus additional?
It comes with a one year and we're having, we would have the factory come and do the startup, which extends the labor warranty and all the parts for a year, so everything's covered for a year. And then you can buy an additional, they call the 66-months, parts for everything. A five-year compressor would be parts only, that doesn't include the labor. It's just they give you the part, no charge. And I think, I don't know if there's any longer ones available or not, I didn't check into that.
Okay. So the total distance from where we want to place this outside to where it is inside, will we lose any efficiency from the placement being where it is or where you plan with it?
No, you shouldn't. And actually, this one should be more efficient than the one you're taking out. We do have to upsize the pumps a little bit to get the water flow we need to push the head through that distance of piping.
Right.
But the pumps need, they're overdue for replacement too, so.
Okay. I have one question. We have 100-ton chiller in there. York only half goes up to 96. Will that be just as efficient as 100 or?
Yeah. They, for some reason, their sizing's a little bit different. They're four tons smaller. When I was actually there, I think it was close to 90 outside and it was cycling off full circuits, which would make, lead me to believe it's oversized if anything. It seems that you have plenty of capacity.
Yeah. In looking at it, we were trying to get the most, the best value for, for that chiller for that purpose. That's why we selected New York over the train.
So the, just to help me out with the efficiency of what it was 30 years ago to now, is it, you know, with the different coolant and everything, I mean, are we saving that extra 5%, 10% just because of efficiencies?
I can actually run the numbers to see.
No, neither.
But maybe that's why we can get by with a 96 and so forth.
Yeah, and then also, the new one will have the newer refrigerant in it, where you've got our 22 in the old one, which is obsolete, are going obsolete, getting really expensive.
Okay. Do you have any other questions? Kevin?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Pass the gentleman BTS.
This is John Gilbert with Building Temperatures Solutions. We've worked on the old one since, I did since 90.
Several times on the phone, but now we haven't faced, so.
And the old one is a, is a safety hazard. I think we found that out this summer when the refrigerant leaked and a couple of people from the jail might have to go to the hospital, you know. So it's, it's time to think about what you're going to do, what you have, get rid of, get rid of it and upgrade to a newer, newer chiller.
We, we checked the lines out that run back, these refrigerant lines run back above the ceiling through the jail. We're not really sure the, the complete route, but they have to go outside and those lines are showing where, where they go across the trapeze hanger. And if one of them wear through, which it's going to, and you're not that far down the road, you're going to have a, there'd be a major problem in that jail, that refrigerant released above the ceiling. So I would suggest doing something and doing something pretty quickly. I mean, it's, it's nothing that was done wrong, it's just 30 years of wear and tear. And we quoted the train, we give you an all-in-one with the Deiken. The reason that we kind of like the train is, we all worked for train for like 20 years so we know the train product, but another plus with the train is the parts availability. York, Deiken, they are sold through distributors that don't really have a lot of parts on hand. I mean, you're on the phone, you're, Deiken is Indianapolis, which doesn't carry a lot of parts. Deiken's parts are a lot. Their equipment is cheap, a lot cheaper when you buy it, but then the parts, they make up for it. And I don't think, well, I know there ain't a lot of parts that they keep in Indianapolis. York, I think where they come out of, Baltimore. So you're on the phone for parts, whereas the train, there's, was there five, six parts outlets around the state of Indiana that somewhere in one of those, they're going to have, they're probably going to have a part land for that chiller if it goes down. And that's what, you know, that's what we like about the train, the parts availability. The train is included with a five-year compressor warranty that is in the price. There's no extra. And also in the price is hail guards. The new coils, they're on these chillers now, they're not the old shell and tube or not, excuse me, not shell and tube, but fin tube. And hail damage is just about a death sentence to these new coils. They're, they're a lot more efficient, they take a lot less refrigerant, but hail on them and you're going to have them, they're going to be damaged. I don't know whether the York, I know the Deiken has the, I think about everybody's going to these new coils, but if you do, make sure, make sure that those, those coils are protected. And then also with, with the new pumps, the old pumps on the train, according to our, our engineers run the numbers on them, they would be sufficient, but they are, they're wore out. The ones leaking, I think we rebuilt the one a year ago, but they do need replaced. And then we quoted, also in our quote, is the fencing, that whole corner there would be contained. Where the radio tower is, as of right now, anybody can walk up to that radio tower and just crawl up it. The fence that we proposed would go down and connect to the existing fence that goes around the, the exercise yard and then all the way around the chiller. So that whole corner would be contained, would be away from, from anybody, be locked up. There was two five-foot gates also in the proposal. And then Friday, they come to us and they said we probably need that sidewalk extended. So also in that price that we give you, there's a, the sidewalk will be extended from where it presently is out through the, the new fenced-in area.
So other than the warranty from the five-year compressor, anything else that could be added to, for an additional fee, for an extended warranty, if that's not an option at this point?
You could probably extend, get extended labor warranty. It's probably a year. There's, currently, we'd have the first year warranty on, you know, as far as labor, but...
Do you have any questions?
My question is how, I mean, since we're just seeing these, do we, can we have a month to look at these? Is that going to be sufficient? I mean, we're not going to fall down tomorrow?
I hope not.
I mean, it's not that I'm poor, I just, I got a couple things I just want to check on, if that's okay with the board?
I have no issue.
On that. Somebody well-respected in the industry that I've known over the years that I'd like to contact on this, if that's okay?
Just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. There's some subtle differences. Do you guys deal with trains also? You said you could do it with a train, so we could potentially have a quote with the train unit instead of. And what timeframe would you see a part being available if we should have the York go down and we needed to replace a part? Is that a concern?
We put a lot of large York units on it, metal dying here in town and their production is relying on it, so there are times when we'll overnight a part if they need something right away. But usually it's two, three days for delivery on just the standard parts if we have to order them for a chiller.
Any other questions?
One thing too on New York with the hail guards, just the way the York one is built, the coils are underneath it and the shape and they have hail protection on them, so it's not spelled out, but it basically is hail protected.
Thank you.
And also Felger's quote included the fence also. One of the things we changed, I have to comment, I appreciate both companies because I've changed, hadn't changed their quotes three times, just figuring out things we really need to have in it, so. I appreciate their cooperation.
One thing too, if I can, the fence guy recommended that when they dig the holes for the posts, they use a, I can't remember what you had a term for it, but it was basically a water jet that dug the holes because of all the grounding wires for the tower. So he had included that into the plan.
I would accept your motion if you want to push that off to our first meeting in October. Yeah.
Second.
That'd be my motion. Thanks, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's all. Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Ed, you are up next.
Thanks, Ed. Your members.
Such a hell of a credit.
Exactly. One time it was there. That was here.
First thing I have, just an upgrade from the Road Striping Company. I did talk to them. They're thinking probably the end of September, first of October to do it. They've got sort of pushed back with some of the rains we've had and stuff like that, so that's where it's going to fall on their schedule right now, so. Chip and seal, we have about seven miles to go. We should finish that up tomorrow. Headed north, the Hot Mix Project, the Hot Mix is done, the berm stone is done. Still have to do the striping on that and that is Three Rivers Barricade, so hopefully that will happen this week, but it's, like I said, they got their schedule pushed back, so, and then it will be done, so. Next thing I have is, got quotes to do Hot Mix on top of six of the projects that we did this year, pipe projects. There's the two quotes, one from Brooks and one from E&amp;B. And I talked to E&amp;B this morning and they said they would probably have it done. I gave them till about the middle of November to do it, because I know they're really, really busy and I think that's probably why your Brooks bid is so high, because they have so much other work to get done this fall, so I guess my recommendation is to go with E&amp;B to get them covered before winter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
E&amp;B, low bid. Thank you.
Just an update on the projects up north. Here at North, we're basically completely done with it. We got all the berms knocked down, all the ditch work and stuff done, all the hoe works done. 950 North, basically everything's done on that. We do have a little bit more dirt work to do along the edges, which we should finish up today. And then 400 West, we still have a few backhoe notes to do on that. We get, we got a little stone on that, so we've got to finish that and then we have to do work on the berms and the side ditches on that, so. That's all I have. And I don't know if Nate will say something, but I will. We have a meeting at 10:30 today to do an inspection on Bridge 193 with Endot and all them people, so to make sure everything is done right.
Okay. Fantastic.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks.
I have a big sack of papers here today. I'll follow up with dusting out the state parks.
I'll be up and down here a couple times, I have to say. First thing on my notes is the Community Crossings Matching Grant. For those who hadn't heard, Wells County was awarded on all four projects. That means we've got a 50-50 match, so Endot is going to be cutting us a check after bids come in of up to $740,896.55. It's kind of an exact total, but that covers five different projects for us. That's Bridge Two, Bridge 203. And Bridge Two is on County Road 700 North, they're over the eight-mile ditch. 203 is over Scuffle Creek down on 1,000 South. Also, it's matching money for three different road conversion projects. That covers County Road 1200 South, there's a half mile there that needs to be finished. There's also County Road 500 South between State Road One and County Home Road. And then finally, County Road 500 West between 224 and State Road 116. So those are the projects that we're looking at picking up. Those have to be let prior to, from what I understand, June of next year. We wouldn't have to have them all completed by then, but certainly we're on, in the works to get all those completed. Those are all actually projects that we are proposing, so it was all part of the planning process we developed and just good timing that we were able to put everything together at the same time to, to make this happen, so. That frees up a lot of money. It's over $1.4 million in construction work and that, that leaves room for other projects as well, so we'll be busy next year, definitely. With that said, we start actually talking about the projects and the work going into them, we've got right-of-way dedications for these projects. Now, I've got letters from different groups on different ones, letters have gone out at different times. Bridge 79, I've got a right-of-way from Thomas and Lisa that they've signed for, for the commissioners to accept. There's also bundles for the two road conversion projects, because those letters went out both for 500 South and 500 West. We've got six from 500 South of 12 and three of nine from 500 West. So I want to give those over to you. We're only missing on Bridge 79, one right-of-way and that's a corner from Huffman, I believe. And I've spoken with him about that, so I'm expecting that he was going to sign for that yet, but I'll certainly contact him. So you've got the list here as well, so if there's anybody on the list that you know of that was interested in the project, asked questions, certainly would encourage you to talk to them. And then there's copies of letters that went out last week for the property owners adjacent to Bridge Two and 203. So this is Bridge 79 and then this is the bundles with the cover sheets of what we received for the other projects. So if you want to review those before they sign any of those, you can sign them after this.
We have quite a few.
Jumping ahead then, last, at the last meeting I mentioned that ADP was requesting a road closure for extended period of time. They weren't really sure what their schedule was. Last week I met with their project manager and it turns out that they won't need to put slack in that high-tension line, so they won't need the road closure as they initially said. So that made that real simple, so that's off the table. Also, jumping back to Bridge 79, that project is actually ready to bid. I have the plan sheets from the engineer here. We've reviewed the specs, have made the modifications to it. The goal is to advertise the project this Thursday, so the first advertisement will go out Thursday, second the following Thursday, and then we would open bids, make sure I get the date right, on Thursday, September 29. That would be the bidders would have to have the bids into the area plan office and then we'd open down here immediately following. It wouldn't be at the commissioners' meeting, but that would give us the weekend to review those Thursday after that and then Friday to coordinate and then we would come with a recommendation to the commissioners the following Monday. So we simply open them, read them, take them under advisement, no action would be taken. It's an open meeting, but it's essentially not a public hearing. That way, we're not pressed by opening them at the commissioners' meeting and I'm also not asking contractors to submit bids on Monday at 8 o'clock if there's any changes. That's a little more, a little more agreeable to contractor schedules, so that's the goal. If you're...
What time?
Hmm? Now, they have me signing the advertisement to bid, but I do have two copies of the cover sheet to be signed by the commissioners, engineer, and then we would include these in the project set.
You said you're going to open them on Friday?
They'd be, they'd be open Thursday immediately.
And receive them?
Well, following receipt.
Okay.
So we'd receive the bids and open them there.
And open them the same day?
Yep, same day. And then if there were any issues or the apparent low, then the engineers from Butler Fairman and Cypher, then contact them.
The 30th is when the torch comes through Wells County.
Ah.
At that time.
Let's not hold that up. That's good to know. That's not in my advertisement. A special note on that project though, due to some connections with Butler Fairman and Purdue University, that project, Purdue University's research group has actually requested three of the box beams from that bridge as part of research study. So Purdue is actually, there are memos here, copies of the memo. Purdue University is going to use portions of that bridge with arc cooperation as part of a research study for bridge design, failure, aging analysis. Initially, we talked about trying to include the shipping cost from the bridge to Purdue as an add alternate with the agreement from the commissioners if, at the time of bid opening, what the cost would be. Purdue actually says that they will cover the cost of shipping. So we've essentially included within the project that we just participate with them, so the contact information for Purdue for coordinating with the contractors, rather than trying to give contractors an opportunity to add the cost to it and just simply include it as part of the project. So with this project, we'll actually be cited in the research study and our participation in it, so I wanted them to make note of that, a special note of that at least, so.
Great.
All right. And here are the cover sheets. I keep getting up and down, sorry.
Signature and then I will go ahead and sign. I had me listed as...
Motion to approve the signatures.
Second.
Aye.
Item number five here, we've got Endot... On item number five here, we've got Endot's small structure replacement. Endot is scheduling to do a small structure over a Walbeish River drain about nine miles east of State Road Three or on State Road one sixteen. They've requested, they've got a official detour for the truck detour that's alternative. We're allowed one unofficial detour, and that's for local traffic. Unfortunately, we couldn't work out two detours, so the detour option that they have right now requested or recommended in our request was to take the detour over the structure on three hundred north to State Road One, and then back on two fifty north. That's a little bit of a long route, unfortunately, but there really wasn't another alternative that we could identify that was suitable. So, that would be for the duration of their project. That'd be for the local traffic to avoid that intersection. So, that was their request. We'd made some modifications to it. There's copies of that detour plan here, if you'd like those.
You need to give them permission for...
You need to, you have to sign off.
Spring or next summer, or...
It is for, I apologize, I believe it is for next summer, spring of twenty seventeen. Yeah, here we go.
Are you okay with it?
Yeah, yeah, we had talked to them from detour.
I'd rather see them just stay on three hundred, come down to one, back up to Gerber Bridge, but that doesn't deal with the, the Gulf Course people.
Correct. It's, yeah, it, we looked at some longer routes potentially, but then, then we'd have to direct traffic backwards, and so it was unfortunate. We couldn't come up with some other alternatives, but we didn't have another route north-south that was closer besides going all the way over to one, so.
Does that require all three signatures?
Yes, it does.
Entertainer motion.
So moved.
Second.
If we can sign both, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With the projects coming up, we have different advertisement schedules that come along, and rather than, than potentially wait for the proof of publication to come through, I talked about internally about getting a subscription to a local newspaper that we're publishing different advertisements and bids. That way, we can track what's going out. I was curious if you'd be in agreement with us purchasing a subscription to the paper there at the highway department, if that would be something.
I would make a motion to have that available to the Wells County Engineers Office.
Second.
In hard copy.
Thank you very much. Final item, and, um, had meant to bring this up to you earlier. Highway Department received a call from the family of Scott Hanny. And if you're maybe aware, he had, was fatally hit riding his bicycle at the intersection of eleven hundred north and County Road one hundred east. The request was to, the highway department was asking if there's some way that they could petition the highway department to, to look at adding different signage there at the intersection, uh, because they wanted to pursue coming to the commissioners and, and potentially assuming that there was some bureaucratic headache that went along with getting signage changed out there. After review, we pulled the police report of the accident, and rather than go through some drawn-out process, I'd like to, to recommend to the commissioners that for a low cost, we could add some small signage there. And I say small, it's warning signage, essentially the cross-traffic does not stop underneath the stop signs because of the nature of how that intersection interacts in light of Scott Hanny's life being taken. And I'd rather do something like that for them than to ask them to try to petition. I think Wells County's a lot easier to work with than that. Be something that we could do.
No, I'm good.
So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's it, so.
Next up, we have, uh, Joel and Todd, if they're in the audience. We're going to, uh, open it up for comments in regards to, uh, the CAFOs discussion from, uh, Thursday. And the rest of it would be one of the, the three items that were listed on the table.
My name's Todd Victor, and, um, address is forty-one ninety-seven East, twelve hundred South Bryant. And considering I live on twelve hundred south, I do appreciate the work you guys have done to finish that section of mile and Nate's work to, to get the grant. I would like to talk, um, last night we had, or Thursday night, we had lengthy discussion on some amendments that were proposed, added to, um, the Wells County ordinance. And the one I would like to discuss is Amendment ten, which is, would require, um, um, people considering putting in a CFO into Wells County to apply for a permit, or an IDIM permit before they can apply for a county permit, is the amendment I'd like to discuss. First of all, um, I, I just kinda have some questions for, for you guys and probably for Roy as far as what legal authority we have and what we can and can't do. First of all, Amendment ten, which would require getting an IDIM permit before you can get a county permit, what's happened in several other counties is during the time that somebody is submitting their IDIM permit, which can take up to ninety days for approval, um, somebody can build within, or somebody can ask for a building permit within the setbacks of that IDIM-proposed site, which would make the CFO move the location because they know, they currently don't have a county permit. So, the first question I have is, um, how, how can Wells County prevent CFOs and local residents from engaging in incompatible use? I guess one of the main, um, things of zoning is that historically zoning seeks to prevent one landowner from harming his or her neighbor by engaging in an incompatible use. Zoning divides into cities, into uses zoning which is harmful, uses are excluded, by segregating zone, attempting to separate incompatible uses. So, that's kind of the first question I have is for you, the commissioners, how you would like area plan to proceed in trying to limit those incompatible uses between homeowners and CFOs? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I will defer to Roy. I have only one comment. The thing could work in reverse, that a CAFO goes in and the neighbor beside him can't put a home up.
Like, currently, it's not that way.
Right.
Right, yeah.
It's not.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, I'll let Roy.
Sorry, what was the question? How do you control incompatible uses?
Right, how, how, how do we prevent CFOs and residents from having an incompatible use by CFO going in and then residents moving within that setback? So, that land is, is an incompatible use at that point, and they're in non-conformant.
So, we have an example of that happening?
I think if, I think if a person has the CAFO established...
Okay.
And the other person builds the house on their own property across, we've talked about that, that their choice to build it, that doesn't protect you from expanding.
Okay.
But, again, that doesn't, it goes the other way. I mean, if you have a CAFO there and somebody has property and wants to build a house, it's already, you know, it's, it's two different sides, and I don't know that that's a solution that we're gonna find today.
Right.
Nor do we really wanna spend probably today's meeting trying to answer that question.
Yeah. And I'm just asking for direction. I don't know that we need to get into all the details today. Um, I think, just, just for example, um, I don't know, four, four or five pages back, there's two different pictures. And it's the second picture, the second map. This is a CFO located in, on four hundred south. It's a New Holland Dairy. And what's happened in this location is, um, the dairy was built the same time as, as the house, which is adjoining it. And since then, the dairy's been sold and the house has been retained by the owner. So, now that house sits within four hundred feet of the dairy, and they're in a, um, so they can no longer get a county permit to expand their lagoon, or, um, they really can't do anything at this point because they have somebody within their setback.
So, they landlocked it, basically, by selling, when they sold it all off.
But they chose to sell it.
So, they sold the unit, and then they sold the house separately. Is that what I'm following? Does that make...
One owner owned both of them at the same time.
Okay.
And he retained, kept the house.
Kept the house.
And sold the dairy.
And the dairies went this way, and now...
Right.
Now, the people that bought the dairy can't expand because that house...
Because the county says that they won't give a permit because there's somebody within their setback of eight hundred feet.
And they didn't know that when they sold it separately?
I don't know if they did or not.
Or who knows? Yeah, right. Good question.
Yeah.
We can't fix everything if people aren't planning ahead, either.
That would, that would be a tough one.
I guess when did this happen compared to when the eight hundred number came into effect?
When did the eight hundred feet come into effect? I don't know. But the problem is, there's no grandfather. There's no, the county's not allowing any type of grandfather clause.
Right.
IDIM does. IDIM does allow grandfather in, of these, but, but Wells County doesn't.
That would be an APC and Roy question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you've highlighted, uh, you know, when, when you and I talked on the phone, I said, well, you got state government, you got local government.
Uh-huh.
And when the two conflict, the same thing we have with respect to, I don't know, somebody called with respect to the Norfolk Southern blocking railroad crossings. And, and I said, you know, I, I was not involved in the case, but I read in the, in the newspaper that Judge Kerikoff had granted a motion for summary judgment to the railroad. And, and since somebody, a, a government official had asked about that, and I was, he didn't ask me, but he asked a commissioner, and the commissioner referred it to me, I went and got the copy of the summary judgment motion and read it. I mean, it didn't, didn't read all the cases, but that's an example where federal government gave to the railroad, uh, Railroad Board the power to control railroads. And, and that is a federal power, and it's, and, and it's a preemption. So, federal law preempts local law trumping that. And so, a, a, a local ordinance regulating the time you can block a railroad crossing impacts how they can schedule trains. And that's something that, you know, the, the movement of the trains is exclusively within the province of this federal agency. So, the, the point is, is if IDIM has the authority to regulate CAFOs, one might wonder, can, and, and I'm saying one might wonder, but your publication for Purdue says there's a specific state law that says a unit that, that would be a county generally does not have power to regulate conduct regulated by a state agency. So, if, if CAFO, I mean, if, if IDIM's got regulations governing CAFOs, which includes grandfather clauses, I, I'm just asking the question without knowing, because it's, I'm not the area plan commissioner's attorney, whether or not you can do something inconsistent with that. As commissioner's attorney, I would say that's, that's a consideration for the commissioners in adopting an ordinance. Is, is, does the county have authority to do that? Is it inconsistent with state law, which might trump whatever you do from local zoning?
And that, that actually leads me to the next question I had on the front sheet. It says, how much authority does Wells County have to regulate CFOs more stringently than IDIM based on Indiana's home rule law? And when I talked to the Indiana Department of Agriculture, and I talked about Amendment ten, where we're requiring people to get an IDIM permit before we get a county permit, and they said, if they, if the county allows them to do that, the county has very legal, very little, um, authority beyond that point. If somebody, because that's regulated by IDIM and they have an IDIM permit, they, they said legally, they didn't feel like the county could hardly restrict after that because of that law. So, I'm just saying, it might lead into something that we don't want even.
Well, you gave me a list of everybody's counties and how different they are.
Sure.
So, have any of them been tested by, you know, judicial review to see if one is good or bad?
Right, um...
Because everything is all over the board on some points.
I don't know. Um, you know, Indiana Department of Agriculture has followed a lot of those things. They're very familiar with our, with our windmill reciprocal setbacks case. They're, they're very up to date on that, and they feel like they are within good standing, um, of, of the twenty-three counties that have that reciprocal setbacks. I'm not saying that's the answer. Um, I'm just saying, they feel that that was thrown out by a local judge, and when it went to the next, to the appeals process, it wasn't argued, and they feel like there's case law that would support their, their position on that. I, I don't know, but, um, I, I just wanted to present those things. I, I don't, I don't really have the answers to these questions. I think it's something that we need to look at. I think it's something... I'm gonna meet with Colin Andrews sometime, their plan attorney, to look at some of these things. But I just wanted any input from the commissioners as, as to of what direction, if any, do you think we need to move on this?
Well, I mean, from my perspective, I'm gonna yield to area plan counsel.
For your current recommendations on the two or three that are on the table today.
Okay.
And beyond that, it's a whole other discussion that we aren't getting into today.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that'll give you guys a guidance on the APC, more cohesiveness to know what's taking place. I mean, unlike with us, not, we don't practice, Roy doesn't practice it.
Yeah.
Can analyze the...
Sure.
Comments, but...
Right, right.
But, yeah, I, I totally understand what you're saying with this on four hundred south. I mean, that's just...
Well, the other, other picture you have is actually mine subdivision that was out on State Road Two oh one.
Right.
And, uh, you know, at one time, that parcel was a dairy on one twenty-four, and it was changed to a feeder cattle operation. So, the quote, I think you're calling that a lagoon, yeah.
Aye.
So, I'm not sure when that was installed, but, you know, I don't, not positive. You know, it was approved at the time.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how it coincides or it difference, you know, how much difference it was from the time it's on.
Yeah, it was an IDIM-approved lagoon.
It was.
Right, right. Right. I, I know it was an IDIM-approved lagoon, but I'm, I'm just saying, from the time we applied to have the subdivision done, like, oh, one, oh, two.
But what we have going here is the way...
Right.
...community should work. I mean, we haven't had issues, but that could be...
If I would wanna expand that CAFO, I would have major trouble.
We, we can't because of that, but we don't intend to. That's why we move farther away.
Sure.
But that's just an instance that if people did have to give and take an understanding, it could be really a major problem.
Oh, yeah.
And so, that's...
Me selling the homes or the home sites was a...
No, I mean, or those home sites, not understanding that, you know, we were there, you built next to a, next to CFO.
Right, sure.
And, I mean, they had been understanding.
Yeah, what, what's gonna happen when that half-million-dollar home now, it's, for say, it comes in with new people that aren't understanding, and their four hundred people are not doing it?
Well, it's, is with everything we sold, the, the paper goes with it.
Right, and that's, that's key.
And that's extremely key.
That's extremely key, yeah. I mean, and I, it's worked very well.
I have less trouble up here than I do down there.
Yeah, it's...
But it's an issue.
Not, not half of it.
Right, it's something that could happen frequently, no, but could happen.
But that's something that I think, like Todd is saying, I think it's something that you, you need to find out. You need to have something in place. I don't know what it is. I don't have an answer. So, at this point, it's not a problem.
Yeah, no, it's invalid. Some suggestions, so.
Well, I also wanted to say, um, I have appreciated, um, your appointment to the APC for this year. I'm currently running for Southern West School Board, and I'm unopposed, and I cannot hold both positions, um, after January first. So, I'll be resigning then, and I hope you appoint someone that, um, can fill this position. I'm sure you will, so.
Well, that's too bad. We don't like that. And you can't serve on both?
Yeah, they're, uh...
It's a lucrative job.
Lucrty positions.
That's lucrative, all right.
Yep, they're lucrative positions.
So, that means we will need to prepare an advertisement... So that means we will need to prepare an advertisement to, um, request applications for that position.
And if you have some individuals too.
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you have contacts that express a desire.
I have had two of them, so I'll maybe.
We appreciate if that would be possible.
Hate to see you go.
Well, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to do this and it's, I really feel honestly like, um, it's a position you probably need to serve on for about three to four years to really grasp the concept. Um, so I kind of feel like I didn't do my due diligence by moving on this fast, but, um.
Things change. You're, you're fine. Good luck with the new position.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
All right.
I, I don't really have anything to add. He kind of hit everything and, and we had lengthy discussion at the, at the APC meeting, so I just.
Thank you.
Thought I'd come. I won't take any more of your time, so.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Joel.
My fully reports, Beth.
I emailed you the twenty-seventeen holiday schedule. Did you have any comments?
Just the one correction we made.
What are you doing, July fifth? You're going to do?
Correct the day after.
Um, oh, that's on the meeting day. Yes, I was talking about the, uh.
Oh, the holidays.
Holiday schedule.
Actual holiday.
I didn't have any.
Holiday schedule, same holidays if we didn't. Tagging.
All favor.
Aye.
Okay. And then the other one was the meeting dates and we did change the meeting date to Wednesday, July the fifth for the commissioners meeting. So, um, since the holiday falling.
On a Tuesday.
On a Tuesday. That way we didn't have to come have a meeting on Monday, the third. So we're just moving that to the fifth, which will be the same day that we have the council's meeting that evening too, so.
Right.
So we did make that change. Are you ready with that?
Yep. In the motion for it too?
Let's do it.
Motion?
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Aye.
And, uh, that's all I have.
I spoke with, um, Ben Adams. He's going to be attending the border works meeting today at the city.
Okay.
If I hear something, I will.
Okay.
Okay. I've got a few items. It was probably three or four meetings ago. Chad Klein was here with respect to agreement regarding metal dime. And I was supposed to thrash out some things with him.
Extending the road or giving a, a share of money toward the river?
Well, it was an agreement regarding the incentives.
Okay. Oh, right, right. I, I did see that.
Okay. So I asked him and one of the incentives, oh, well, that's not applicable, so we took that out. And okay, so fine. Anyways, I had it already. He was at the next meeting. Never got to this. So, and then he said, where are we on agreements? I said, well, waiting for you to be here for it, so if you hadn't shown up yet, then. You said that for me to thrash it out with him, I thrashed it out. Start somewhere for you to sign that memorandum of understanding on the incentive.
Motion to approve pending Chad's agreement?
No.
Can we sign it second?
Hey, it's got to start, it's got to start somewhere.
Is it everyone's signature or the president of?
I think it's, I think it's all commissioners.
Okay.
No, take that back. It's just, come on.
And for the president to sign.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
A motion to approve metal dine agreement for incentives.
But I've got other things for you to sign.
And for Blake to sign.
Uh, did you sign them all?
So?
I think, I think there's four, four copies maybe.
Great. I'll stick one of them.
He said three or four.
Well.
Back to Beth or back to you?
I'll take one if you have.
You want them?
I, this one.
It's, that, it's only signed by commissioners. It doesn't have everybody signing it.
Huh? I just want to put it with my name.
Okay.
Can she keep one?
Sure.
How about the one that Blake already wrote his full information on?
Give her that one and I'll fill out the rest.
I think it was the second one.
Thank you.
Then Nate handed me packets with respect to right of ways, um, for five hundred south, five hundred west, and one for, one of the bridges on two hundred, uh, let's see, Bridge.
Bridge seventy-nine, I think.
Bridge seventy-nine, yes. So, um, we should probably move and accept those right of way dedications.
Those should be accept the right of way dedications and to sign them after the meeting.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
And about all of them are dated August, so I found one that had a September, so I went upstairs and made copies, so. Find a way.
Okay.
I'll count how many I actually need.
Anything else?
Uh. No, I think that's it.
Beth, you said there was nothing else?
I don't have anything else.
On the last item.
Of, of permitting.
The ordinance, which was that?
The APC. Are we doing that today?
Did Michael bring that, make that?
I don't have anything on it.
I don't have anything. I mean, nobody gave me.
Well, I have anything.
Maybe you want me to text him quick? See if he's up in his office.
He's up in his office.
Unless I'm going to have to see if there is. Do you have the ordinance, question mark, for any, for any signatures on the bridge? Please come down.
Putting up some room time?
Hey, I do have one more thing I'd like to add.
Sure.
Um, I was, um, some individuals have reached out to us as commissioners to look at a possible, uh, study, what CAFOs do within a county, uh, the possibility of it. And this time it's, it's something we'll look into, uh, take under advisement. We're not, uh, it was, it was just raised. The question was raised and I just wanted to note that. And, uh, we're not taking any action on that at this time currently.
Right. We have conference the end of the month in, uh, Portland.
Yeah.
We have Mayor Fisher's caucus, um, a week from this next Wednesday, so. Normally we have a commissioner from every county at that meeting, so. And all of them have dealt with combined animal feeding operations, so I'd like to get some insight, input from them also. Would I be able to speak here a little bit about roads and some CFOs?
Very shortly.
You bet. Do you have nothing else? Now we're all about the public comment.
Come on up.
Okay.
Public comments. If you will state your name for the record. I know it's, feels weird.
My name is Doug Kluficker from, uh, Nonahan Township, eight one four east, nine hundred south Keystone. Um, my sons and I, we operate four CAFO barns. Um, started in two thousand and seven with the CAFOs. Before that, we was, um, just small time hog farmers. But, um, and then we progressed into this. I think the, the whole farming has evolved into larger farming. I don't consider them factories. I consider them family farms what we do. But, um, I guess my comments, you know, from, on the APC meeting on, uh, Thursday, I might repeat it just a little bit, but, uh, I know what they're going to recommend and I, I agree with what they want to recommend. I think it was the, um, the one about the road use agreement. I really feel as though that, uh, and I, I did talk to Blake, I talked to Tamara and I talked to Kevin, um, each one of you about it. And, and I'm real strongly, you know, saying that, uh, we don't need a bond or a letter of credit to repair these roads. I feel as though that if we would do that, I feel as though that we should, uh, make everyone who gets a permit from the county, whether it's a house, um, a pond, a garage, um, a leach bed, that, that they would have to get a, um, a bond too. It might be on a smaller scale, but, you know, they do just the same amount of damage percentage wise as what I would, uh, would be doing if I was building a CAFO. Or a CFO, not a CAFO. But, um, I also feel that our roads in Wells County have been deteriorating for years. There hasn't been much done. And I do appreciate Nate, you know, getting that, that grant that he got. And I'm really encouraged about, you know, what you guys just talked about, the roads getting, uh, more miles, um, converged. But also we need more gravel put on these gravel roads to get this base thicker. In two thousand and fifteen, February, let's just start January, February, March, we had, uh, all this freezing and thawing. And it deteriorated these roads. It heaved them and it just tore them up. And, you know, that's not the CFO's, you know, problem, in other words, or, uh, or not problem, it's not our fault. It's not the, the trash trucks' fault, you know, it's not the, the railroad, you know, their heavy trucks or the grain farmer. I mean, it's just one of those things. So I guess my point saying that is, you know, when we're doing construction, you know, these roads are deteriorating anyhow. They got a, a rare, a real thin base. When we cut through a road to put a tile in, I bet you that base is only three inches thick when we cut through. Then it was clay underneath. And, you know, when you get into spring thaws, those things, you know, they're going to tear up naturally, not just because of, you know, us, our CFOs. I mean, it's everyone. It's all of us in here, you know, that has a vehicle. So I, I would, I'm glad the, uh, the APC, you know, kind of saw through this and said, you know, we don't need a maintenance bond or, or letter of credit saying that we're going to repair these roads. All of us are paying taxes that has vehicles here in this county or own property or buy gasoline in here to help repair the roads. And we should continue to repair the roads, just like you guys have done this last year. And it looks like next year we're going to see a lot more progress in that. I don't really like to see us increase this wheel tax when we're not using all the funds from the county highway. And I'm just going off information that was handed to me and I'm not sure where all that came from, but is the million dollars we had left over in fifteen, nine hundred thousand and fourteen, and six hundred and thirteen, um, that was left over. And that money should be used for the county roads to be maintained, in other words, to get these bases thicker, to chip and seal some of these, uh, tar roads that are just look like tar right now. They, and if it's a program that's once every seven years, they get chipped and sealed. Well, the Meridian Road and nine hundred south from Petroleum to the Southern Wall School needs chipped, chipped and sealed, gosh, maybe every three years, you know. Where, let's say, a, a county road of five hundred west, you know, where there's just houses on that road, they might not need chipped and sealed for eight or nine years. So I don't think a program of every seven years, whether it needs it or not, needs it that way. It needs to be done, you know, as that road needs it, in other words. Now, with me going back saying, you know, I don't want to raise the wheel tax to, um, to get more money just so, um, you can use just the wheel tax only to repair the roads. I think that fund that's carried over should be used up first, within a couple three hundred thousand dollars, make sure you got money to, for emergency situations. But once we're using that up, if, if we're at that point, we say, we need more money to repair the roads and bridges, the infrastructure of our county, then maybe we need to look at the wheel tax again to say, if we're at six percent now, maybe we need to go to eight percent. And I don't, I don't know that. That's something that needs to be studied. I do think, as I shared with Mr. Woodward, that I'd like to see a cap on it because the newer vehicles, I just checked this morning on all of ours. Our newer vehicles are paying twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars where my two thousand fours is paying seven dollars and fifty cents. Well, that new vehicle is going to do the same amount of damage as what the, the old vehicle and then vice versa. So it should be more of a, 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 a top rate, in other words, where it's a flat fee for any vehicles, in other words. But I do agree with the semi-trailers, you know, we got, I think it's fourteen trailers. Not all fourteen can be on the road. It's only a couple three, you know. So most of them set, I would say, eleven months out of the year. So I don't want to raise those way up because they set eleven months. So I do like just a flat rate. If we're going to, if we're going to use the funds out of the county highway fund and we're not having this million dollars or nine hundred thousand or six hundred thousand dollars left over every year, then I would look at, say, hey, you know, maybe we need to look at that again. I, I'm not for raising taxes, but I want to make sure we got good infrastructure for the roads. And the reason they're deteriorating is because they're not being maintained enough. I think they're being maintained, but they're not maintained enough. But I guess, uh.
Well, Doug, we all know, ever since we've talked, everybody wants it and they don't want to pay for it.
Yeah.
But they, and they don't think the county should be a profitable business. That's, that's the state around. Everybody knows that.
Yeah.
If you live in a county, you can't make money. But then, as we know, we want to provide the services which everybody needs. And so consequently, you know, the councils are raising taxes accordingly within, you know, their boundaries to try and maintain these, you know, to get these roads. I agree with you, you know, to, to take these roads up. And as we spoke earlier, you know, the state of Indiana really won't recognize you for funding unless you do maximize the wheel tax.
I'm really glad to hear that at the meeting, I think a lot of the farmers came together and the Farm Bureau representatives and everyone, you know, they did get behind that and say that they were willing to help support, build the new roads and, and put more money into it when that time comes because that's what we are doing at this point. We've had roads that were built years ago that didn't even know what a tanker truck was or a tractor the size of today's tractors were going to be running on them. And we are building roads today for the future, for the twenty-first century farmers, for the people that need to run the trash trucks and the stone trucks and the things that we have today. So that's our goal, is to build better roads, maintain the roads better so that we don't have those problems down to the future. So we got to prepare for that. It's going to cost money.
Yeah, and I think you guys are starting to prepare for it.
And we're going to spend it.
Yeah. I don't think it's been done probably since two thousand and seven and eight till last year, this last year here. But, you know, like I said, that, the million dollars that was left over, that shows me that you guys are running it as a profit. And I know you can't, but that million dollars left over and then the year before, the nine hundred.
We're looking into that. Remember, we talked about that Thursday night and we're going to hit the bottom of it.
But if you're, if you get to a point where you're using that every year.
We will be.
And I'm talking about road. I'm not talking about a.
We will be. We're not going to stash it. We're, we're using it.
I mean, Nate told us right now, if we tried to take a stone road to a chip and seal, it would take us to two thousand and fifty-five. To get every mile in the county done.
That's one thing I would give Nate credit for. Everybody, um, Thursday night, both sides had opinions, but one of the things that I heard consistently was how thankful we all are for Nate being our new engineer and what a good job he's doing. And he really brings a whole new level to our ability to plan these things. And he actually has a schedule that he's working on. And like you said, not every road needs maintenance every seven years. Some need it more often, some need it less often, and he's working on those things. So it's really wonderful.
I think it's good to have Nate on, on board with us, so. But I wanted to make sure, at the meeting, I kind of felt as though that some of the people thought that we were the problems, the CFOs. And, and we're not the problem. We are, by no means are we the problem. The problem is the roads and we're all paying taxes for it, whether it's wheel, whether it's county, whether it's, uh, you know, the gasoline, you know. We're all pitching in our share, in other words. My share's a little bit bigger than it should be compared to the person who has a vehicle. But it's the roads issues and that road issue, I hate to say it, but it comes back to you guys in the highway department and the funding on it. And so you guys are the ones that's making that decision.
And the state.
And the state.
Uh, you're right.
Thankfully, we just received.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and forty something thousand dollars.
That's huge. That's huge.
That's huge. He's absolutely right. I mean.
I know it's because we had those projects planned ahead. If we would have waited until we heard about the grant matching offer.
And we didn't have Nate to do it.
We wouldn't have had the opportunity because we couldn't have gotten those projects put together in time to apply. We had those projects already in the works, already planned out, already on the table. And Nate was, became aware of the grant and. We had those projects already in the works, already planned out, already on the table, and Nate was, became aware of the grant, and because of that, we were able to double our money. So, the county was working already toward that project. We just got blessed with double our money, because Nate was able to get that grant for us, so.
We hope they do it again next year.
It's not the only reason that we were doing the projects. We were doing the projects before that grant ever came before us, that we could apply for. So you're aware of that.
Alrighty. Well, I appreciate, you know, your guys is, you know, listening to me on this.
Sure.
But I did wanna make clear, I, I, we're not the problem out there. We're, we are part of the solution of taxes here in the county. We, uh.
Well, I think we talked about it. I mean, I, people need to realize, everybody wants food on their table, but they don't wanna know how it got there. I mean, you guys get it started.
I've been to several meetings about that issue.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, let's face it. Get, get these people, they need to know you started in the food chain.
It's all about being a good neighbor, being together, being a community. All of us together as a community.
And the meeting I was at, um, they didn't want any of the livestock people to come out here and try to argue against a group that doesn't want, you know, beside their place. You just gotta work it out somehow, and, and it's at the county level, um, get it worked out, in other words, so it can't come here. Um, livestock is, grain farming and livestock is the key to Wells County's engine here. Um, I, I hope more industry comes here, um, on the same thing. I, I hope more CFOs come here. I think it's great. We're using a lot of corn in this county. Um, the ethanol plant is using forty million bushels a year. Um, livestock is using two million five hundred thousand, give or take, could be two point eight. Um, we cannot produce enough corn in Wells County to supply both needs. And that's amazing. I mean, we're an inclusive county. That's, that's pretty good. We're buying, our county is buying corn from all around the counties around here. And, and, and it's huge, and it brings in, we got a positive basis, and that's different between Chicago Board of Trade and what we're getting at the ethanol plant. Um, there's a lot of times we're getting twenty, thirty cents positive, and you take that over, you know, eight, or, you know, you know, forty-eight million bushels, because Wells County produces eighty, eight, eight million five hundred thousand, something like that, of corn a year. Um, you're talking millions of dollars that's coming in this county, just because we have these two infrastructures in place. Not including the dairies, the two million five hundred. I mean, you know, the dairies produce, use a lot of corn, but the hogs do too. That's all I have. I appreciate you guys. Um, you guys do a good job. Let's keep up the good work, and, and I'm sure that, uh, you'll still have controversy on both sides. We just gotta work them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Answering your questions.
Mike has not answered my questions.
Then we won't have, don't, we don't have anything. No, we'll do next meeting.
Cool. What, are you guys gonna cancel the meeting?
Oh, I mean, in October.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, um, during the street fair, we, we will be, I'd make a motion to cancel that meeting.
I thought we already did mention that last time.
I think we just, I thought we did too, but it was just for the drainage.
We did on the solid waste.
Solid waste.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Any other comments before we enter? Yeah, Chris.
Christopher, one 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 five south, seven hundred west. I thank you guys for my nice paved road. I really am enjoying it. And I think maybe, I hear figures like, you gotta re-chip and seal every seven, eight years. I don't think those figures are realistic, 'cause I bought my farm down there in two thousand, moved in in two thousand and one, and they were just doing eleven hundred the year I moved down there. They put the first two coats on in two thousand and one, and they put the top coat on in two thousand and two. They have not touched that road since. That road is fine. I mean, my trucks, we got, between my family, we got fifty plated vehicles. All of them travel eleven hundred. The road is fine. So, I hear this, you gotta re-chip and seal every five, seven, eight years. I, I don't think that's the case.
And that's when they did a conversion, Chris?
Right, they convert.
From stone?
Yep, they went from stone to, and.
And the conditions from that time, I'm, I'm happy to hear, maintained with all the traffic that's on them.
It's a fine road.
And that, and that's kind of what we've, we've always maintained. That's why it might cost a little more when we put the base down and stuff, but what you're referring to is just the normal, when we go through and put the fines on top with.
You're saying every seven, eight years. Well, I, I.
Maintenance.
I see what the, I know what traffic that road gets, and I think your maintenance fee is a little high. You're, if you gotta divide something between seven years or twelve years, there's a big difference there. And I also would recommend the county, like I see they just chip and sealed nine hundred around the river there. You know, I told my wife, why do they do that? That, that, that road gets so little traffic, so little traffic. It seems like you'd be better off spending your money on the roads that get the traffic. You know, that's, that's just my, you know, that's just my, every, every business, there's room to improve. And I think, you know, if you guys would do more studying on which roads are the heaviest traffic, and put your money towards there, that would be a better benefit, just like my business.
We appreciate that actually very much, and the road inventory was just completed this summer by Nate, and so that's gonna be addressed. It will be addressed.
That's good.
We assure you.
Well, I, that's just, that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you.
Thanks. Nothing from Mike, so.
I'm gonna ask you to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.